Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
I guess we'll wait for her to go through the bills.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I have an announcement I'd like to make.
Okay.
Further, would you request that...
Come on.
That as your emissary to the hospital board, you make note of this and do appropriate action. Steve Granzel's father died, I believe, last night. And so, we probably ought to express our sympathies to the board through your membership. And that's for everybody else's information too, by the way.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know, is it... In times like this, do we give like a... sign a card or anything given to them from the board? Or not?
I think we have.
Is there anything any...
Where was he at? Where was he at?
I don't know.
We've never done it before. I didn't know if people did that.
I think we ought to express...
Yeah, I will. The next Tuesday, the third Tuesday is the meeting. I will pass that on from the commission. Okay? And Commissioner Jim here wanted to wait to approve the minutes until Alexis got here. So...
We do have a piece of correspondence somewhere from John Grace.
Okay.
It was an email, and I don't remember where it came from or when it... how it come in. But in it, he and Lincoln Park Manor and Grace Team Incorporated both indicated that they had no interest in purchasing the funeral.
Funeral home?
The nursing home.
Nursing home, one of those things.
They're not gonna buy your funeral either.
He could. We might ask him about that. But no, that was no wishy-washy. It was straightforward. And I don't know, it was on an email. I presume everybody got it.
I got it too, yeah.
So, we need to make note of that when we start talking about Lincoln Park Manor.
Okay, and also, I guess we could talk about... Jennifer gave us a... O'Hare a letter also. Maybe we could report here to the... if I can find it. We asked our county attorney to look into... We've had this Wilson Lake issue with the roads and the... They had a mud landslide off the road. And we were getting involved on whether the county's... what our responsibility was to it and/or if we would fix it and all that. And here's a letter back from Jennifer. I'll read. It says, Dear Board, I have not received any new information from Schwab Eaton regarding the road issue at Wilson Lake Estates. It is my understanding that the board would like to continue with the order to obtain bids. I would advise that this is very premature as we do not even know the extent of the damage or the estimated cost or plan for the road. I would also advise that this issue may need to be reviewed or assisted by the new director for the Highway Department. I do not obtain bids without the assistance of a department. This is a specialized issue. I would ask that the board proceed with caution. It may also be pertinent to follow up with Schwab Eaton to determine the status of their inspection. And then she says she's not available on August 12th. She was out of town. So anyway, very truly yours, Jennifer O'Hare. So, that's ongoing there with how do we deal with the Wilson Lake Estates issue.
That probably ought to be held until we select or hire what we're gonna do about a hit of the department.
Yeah, I agree too. Unless it's really timely, we have to fix that road or something.
I... this is going back to the nursing home. But apparently, John Grace is not feeling the need to email the county. So, whatever records you guys have, you guys get emailed, somebody needs to provide me a copy.
Oh, really? Sorry, yeah.
No, that's okay. But that way, we can go back if you ask.
I'll forward the email to you, okay?
Okay, and then I can print it out and put it in the file.
I didn't know if he sent it to you or not.
I didn't see it, but... Not gonna make any broad statements either that I haven't... Because it could've got caught in the morning.
Hi. I called the meeting to order.
Oh, thank you.
We've just reviewed... We've just not done much yet. We talked... We got the letter from Jennifer about Wilson Lake Estates. We just discussed that a little bit, and we haven't done the minutes yet.
Okay, sorry. I had some landowners call me, and they were all at this intersection and asked me to stop, so I was there for a little bit.
So, and we have... there's some more correspondence for bills. We haven't done anything with that.
Okay.
And we haven't done the minutes, so...
So, to address this letter, I don't know if you two caught on to this or not, but we never asked the county attorney to get bids for the landslide project. There were two separate issues. One was the landslide project. The other one was getting an actual plat map published of just that area. That's what we had asked her to do. So, I think she's confused.
We decided informally that we probably let that rest until we get a chief of highway.
Highway director involved, maybe?
Well, what we need to do is contact Schwab Eaton and find out where their report is. Because it's my understanding they were already out on site for the landslide. So, we haven't heard anything from them?
No.
Well, maybe they've tried to contact the Highway Department.
Well, Liz would be there.
Yeah, well, I don't know. And Jim informed us that Steve Granzel's father passed away and informed us of that. When we have the meeting next Tuesday, I will give our condolences as the commissioner...
Okay.
From the commission.
Okay.
And that's about all we've...
Well, we know that John Grace sent an email.
Right. Did you get it?
Yes, I did read that.
And that he stated that he is not interested in buying the facility.
Correct.
And that's where we're at, so you can take over from here.
That's interesting, isn't it? Um, I have some receipts here, invoices. Lincoln Park Manor Hayworth Plumbing, 211-19 for... Wait, these say paid. Do you know what that means, Dawn? It says paid on this one. Flush valve, something illegible.
Does it just say it's paid or does the statement say it's paid?
Well, this would be the... this would be the carbon copy for the invoice.
Didn't we pay that last week?
No, well, that's something different.
Maybe the statement might... they might not be associated with each other.
Okay. Is that about Hayworth?
Yeah.
One...
Maybe we didn't pay the...
We paid the large bill last month, so that's probably saying we paid it. But then the other ticket is a new ticket.
Well, there's one for $112.99 in that portion. But it looks like that's the portion that's not paid. This one is from Lincoln Building Supply for some sort of plug, $20.99. This is the Lincoln Senior Center calendar with a note. Lincoln County Commissioners, thank you for funding the place we love. You're friends with the Lincoln Senior Center. There's some signatures on there. And $2020 note for OSHA compliance. Looks like a seminar. I don't know if either of you want to attend that. Those are duplicates. And K-CAM. To the commission.
I'll keep this one, all right?
Sure. This is for nominations to the board for K-CAM, which I assume would be done at the annual meeting, the voting, which should be November, I believe. And... These are the department head responses for purchasing policy and evaluations. This is... this goes with that. These are on their budgets. Would you like to do the minutes now?
Okay.
We have two meetings, August 5th and August 8th.
Well, that's yours.
This is the budget, yeah.
I move we approve the August 5th minutes as written.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And August 8th was a special meeting for some particular topics.
Well, I have one issue on this. Not an issue, it's not a... we... We said we had a consensus to reach the top three applicants, but actually, we only took two, right?
Uh, where's that worded? Once a consensus is reached?
Yes, when you came out of executive session, you only took two.
Right, but we told you on the minutes to do three, so your minutes are right. I just want to tell the community that, so we've only selected two applicants to actually interview. Now, I don't know if we...
Does it say that?
Well, it says right here.
Yeah.
No, but I'm saying, where's the follow-up on that?
I'm writing a book. Oh, I didn't put a follow-up.
Yeah, I think maybe we could just add that. Because what we... the action that we took after the executive session was to assign the clerk to request interviews with the top two. How about that?
Okay.
Instead of with no action taken, why don't you just... The chairman reconvene the meeting at 11:28 a.m.?
Well, she did not take action during the executive session, so then we would add...
I'm sorry. Sure, 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 sure.
Um, the board approved...
Yes. Yeah.
Other than that, I...
Two applicants for interview, I would say.
It looks fine to me.
That'd be fine. And then I move to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'll second.
Now, let's have some discussion.
Sure.
On the Highway Department, that's not exactly what we said was going to happen to the Highway Department. It says in there, Alice moved to appoint Mrs. Heater from the Appraiser's Office across chain of Highway Department. What we instructed Mr. Loman to do was to talk to the head of the appraiser, Rhonda, who Terry Heater worked for, and get her permission to use her. Because Rhonda sets the hours, and she decides when she can go and what her availability is gonna be. That did not happen.
That was an afterthought, though. She's right, because my motion was to utilize that particular employee because she had already been over there, and we had budgeted extra time for her in another department. But you're right.
Then we can't do that.
The continuing discussion was that there would be... And Dawn actually requested it, that we go straight to the department head.
But there really was no...
That wasn't in my motion.
And nobody assigned anybody to go to the department head, so...
Well, two of us did.
I kind of did, and yeah, she did. Ended up...
That was a discussion that you... Continue on. Most of our problems with all the dang people in the county, and it goes back for a long time, is we do not talk to the department heads. We should. Those are the only people we're supposed to talk to. Because they set the hours, they set the workflow, and all that stuff. We are, as a commission, are not supposed to be talking to people going around the department heads. And we've got to make damn sure that in the future, we go out of our way to make sure that we do that. That's a major sticky point with virtually every department in this county right now. And because it's a bad situation, we need to lean over way backwards and make sure that we're only talking to department heads and not to some subordinate. And it's getting critical. When we go over to the Highway Department today, that's one of the things that's gonna come up because we have been very remiss in that. In this case with Rhonda and Terry is a case in point. We should've been much more careful in what we did. A lot of that's my fault because I didn't jump on to it in time, but...
Well, prior to 2018, department heads weren't even required to report to the commission.
I know that.
So, there... it goes both ways. I mean, either they were voluntarily coming and discussing issues, or there was no communication whatsoever. So, yes, it needs to go both ways.
But now, we got to have it. We've got to go over backwards to make sure we only work with department heads. Really, just... we've got to go out of our way to make sure that that not only is in fact, but is a perceived fact for the people who work for the county.
Well, the perfect example in that situation is that we were unaware that we had set a specific budget so that the employee in the appraiser's office could work also with the elected official down the hall. And it was never reported to us that that wasn't even happening until that particular person showed up and requested that there be a floating employee for them to be able to utilize. And I thought, well, wait a minute, didn't we already solve this problem? So, lack of communication, I'll agree, and it goes both ways. And I did go directly to the department head after the meeting. And we said that Randy would also do that because he was willing to physically go to the Highway Department to sit at the desk and figure out what needs to be caught up as far as paperwork. Is there any further discussion?
Do you want me to add something?
Sure.
Well, I don't think I want to.
I... I mean, I could put that I asked you to go to the department head if you want me to.
It doesn't make any difference in that meeting.
I didn't really feel like there was a decision made.
That's... the minutes are all right.
There was. We discussed it.
But I just need that discussion.
Yeah. There was definitely a decision made, and I... and we recognized what you had said, and I thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, you brought that up, and you were right. And so, I... Alexis did, and I did too, when I talked to Rhonda and Terry about, you know, what's possible. First of all, Terry's somewhat busy now, I understand here. So, that's for top priority, in my opinion. I talked to Rhonda about it, and...
So, would you like something added to that section?
To just say... what would you say?
I'd leave it alone.
That's fine. Motion's on the table to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Mr. Doe.
Yes, ma'am. Are you ready?
Fine, thank you.
I'd like to thank the commission for saying me today. First off, reference the LEPC committee. There are two new appointments that need to be made for the LEPC committee. There needs to be a representation from law enforcement, the EMS. Gary Keun was the appointment from the law enforcement agency. However, with his recent resignation, that leaves the position empty. I have spoken to undersheriff Florence, and he has agreed to fill the position. He attended the last LEPC meeting. That was a working lunch that was held on Monday, July 9th, in the basement of Lincoln County Hospital. The other replacement would be Derek Walter or his designee from EMS. Pursuant to the Emergency Planning Committee Right to Know Act, EPRC, also known as Title III of the Superfund Amendments and Reauthorization Act, SARAH, local emergency planning committees, LEPCs, show complete preparation of an emergency plan and review such plan once a year, or more frequently as circumstances change within the jurisdiction. This past meeting, we... I handed out sections seven, eight, and nine of the Emergency Operations Plan, and it's called Emergency Support Functions. And they were reviewed at the meeting. Anybody... they received that information prior to the meeting. I think you received it as well. The ESF's information, when Ladonna sent out the information pertaining to. And again, at this point, I have not received any other changes or notifications of changes at this point. Thursday, August 29th, there will be a mitigation plan meeting at 9:30 at the Ottawa County Courthouse in the basement. I would like to request Ladonna Reiner be able to attend this meeting with me as the mitigation plan is updated every five years. The last time this was done, in 2015. The plan is completed by K-DAM as a regional project. Emergency Operations Plan is set to expire in August of 2020. And again, the state is taking this on as a regional project. There will be a breakout session offered at the KEMA conference in Topeka, September 11th through the 13th, and scheduled with regional EOP workshops shortly thereafter. At this point, I would like to notify the commission that I have given my resignation to Clerk Harlow effective August 9th... Excuse me, I gave it to her August 9th. I am considering this my exit interview. My name is David Doe, and I will be resigning my position as the Lincoln County Emergency Manager effective the end of business on Friday, August 23rd, at 4:30. A question that I have for the commission. What is your perception of the position of emergency manager for Lincoln County? You have previously stated that, as with other counties, our size, as they have their EMs, emergency managers, in a part-time capacity assigned to our duties, to other duties within their county. In a discussion that we had on July 18th, your overall assessment follows. Our county's nature and population does not warrant a full-scale need for emergency management facilitation. Can you give me the data to justify this statement, and what is your statement based on? And again, you're contemplating that. Another section of the assessment follows. Excessive travel is not justified for maintaining credentialing. What does this statement mean? Provide me examples in writing of where this information is pertinent to my travel, training within the county, state, or nation. Once the position has received the initial training, you are required to receive 12 hours of training per year or 24 hours in a two-year period to keep your certification as recognized by the Kansas Emergency Management Association, KEMA, which I received and continue to maintain through this day. With the training set forth by the Kansas Division of Emergency Management, K-DAM, you have 24 months to receive your certification from your hire date. Should I have the opportunity to receive some training and then bring it back to Lincoln County to the different agencies that I... that the position communicates with, it would be worth the interest of the residents of the county. When I attend training sessions, the information that I receive and bring back to the county plays a key part in how the county will mitigate an event within our county and how we will be able to respond and react to the event. The people that I attend these sessions with also have knowledge about incidents within their jurisdictions. And with the conversation and education that I've received, I am able to bring that information back to make the county more prepared and aware. However, you deem this as unimportant. Training is a vital component of emergency management and homeland security. Training helps prepare communities, emergency workers, organizations, and citizens to handle a variety of situations. The Kansas Division of Emergency Management and Kansas Homeland Security Division offer training for mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery activities. Kansas Administrative Regulation KAR 56-2-2 states the applicant or the individual will be available to travel to attend training courses and emergency preparedness conferences. I would like to discuss the meal policy updated in 2002 of the Lincoln County Handbook that was last updated in 2012. Again, I attended Department of Homeland Security-funded training in 2015, reimbursed $514.92 in 2015. 2017, I reimbursed $768.76. 2018 reimbursement was $499.54 for meals and mileage to Pueblo, Colorado. I asked the commission to be able to utilize the county credit card for fuel and meals while I attended this training. The commission, at each point at each of these training opportunities, allowed me this purpose... This process, excuse me. When I returned, I submitted the receipts to the county clerks and submitted the paperwork to the appropriate federal agency. The county was reimbursed for mileage driven on the county vehicle and for the meals at the federal per diem rate. There was never any discussion about the fact that I went over the meal policy rate of $6 for breakfast, $8 for lunch, and $10 for supper. When I attended DHS training in College Station, Texas, from June 17th to the 24th of this year, I returned and submitted my receipts to the federal agency and to the county clerk's office. I was told that I would be reimbursed for $186.40, of that submitted $188.55. There was a gratuity charge of $2.15 on one of the... on one of the submitted receipts. I reimbursed the county for the expenditure. I was told that I needed to reimburse the county for $48.55 because I had gone over the county's set level for meals. When I came before the commission on July 15th to address this issue, I was told that the commission would no longer allow meals to ask or expenditures to be put on the county credit card, and that would eliminate the problem. The information that I submitted to the commission on July 15th, your inattentive actions and shuffling through paperwork and signing documents while I was conveying my information was very disrespectful. I am still requesting to know why this was not allowed with previous training that I had attended with complete reimbursement, and since this has previously happened, I assume that this procedure was still allowed. When the audits for the county completed... when the auditors for the county completed the audit, I was not made aware that this was an offense in 2015, 17, or 18, and I was wondering why it is now. It is a wonder that the Lincoln County... It is a wonder that Lincoln County hasn't any employees, if you continue to talk down rather than to the employees, as the employees, department heads, questions. This way, you or the commission interact or don't interact with the people, it is not a wonder that no one wants to work for the county. The fact that two of you have recently posted on the social media site discussing of actions already taken or in discussion of actions that you are currently taking. It's a wonder the county hasn't had legal action taken against them. Make it a point to invite that person to a meeting. With the social media access, everyone is six foot tall and bulletproof and not afraid to talk. Whatever happened to personal interaction, communicating with a person? At the July 29th meeting, when Ladonna Reiner, the Health Department Administrator, came before the board to report on the recent department head meeting, she informed you of a concern of the county employees that this commission support the department and decisions made by them. When a person asks one of you a question, it doesn't show that you're uninformed, but that would... the facilitation discussion from the person being directed to talk to that department head. Communication with the department head should be done prior to making a change or making a motion, seconded and voted on and approved, and the department head or employee wasn't notified prior to the event at the special meeting held on July... excuse me, August 8th, 2019. Is this good management? In closing, I would like to let the people of Lincoln County know that it has been a pleasure to serve them for the past five years as the emergency manager in the previous year since my hire date of December of 2003 at the sheriff's office as a communications officer in JR. Thank you.
Did you turn your resignation in in writing?
No, I typed it and gave it to Dawn.
Okay. And is that document on your county computer?
No, it's on my personal computer.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the budget on the agenda now. And... I see that it's already put into format. And what we did was, we used last year's numbers because many of the requests were more than the 1.5... Am I right, Dawn? 1.5% increase. So, that being said, that changes some of the requests right off the bat.
Two things first.
Yes.
I guess the rules have changed for audits, and the auditor is required to put a disclosure on the bottom of each audit if they... or each budget if they help prepare it. So, I have an engagement letter that they would like you guys to sign acknowledging that they are helping you prepare the budget and that the statement is going to appear at the bottom of the budget.
There's no assurances, is that...
Yes.
No assurances provided substantially. All disclosures omitted.
So, here is the letter of engagement, if you would... I didn't need copies, I'm sorry. The second thing is, this is the budget that they prepared. Right now, we have a considerable amount of money that we have to cut or we have to have an election. So, if you look at the bottom of page one, this tells you the dollar amount that we cannot exceed.
So, before we get... let's address this before we move on to that because I think we can talk about all of that at once. I would entertain a motion to have the chairperson sign the...
Letter of engagement.
Letter of engagement. And I will just read the summary here. The 2020 budget will not be accompanied by a report. However, you agree that the 2020 budget will clearly indicate that no assurance is provided on it, and substantially, all disclosures are omitted, and that the summary of significant forecast assumptions and accounting policy will be included with the budget. Our fee is based on the time required by the individuals assigned to the engagement at their standard hourly rate plus travel costs. We expect our fees will approximate the fees charged for budget preparation in prior years unless you request additional time and services. So, actually, our fees should slightly decrease since we're not having them... do any preliminary work, correct Dawn?
Well, they're still going to come out. I mean, I still have to make changes.
But if they just printed off last year's numbers, they didn't have to spend any time inputting like they would have in years prior.
Oh yeah, no, this whole document they prepared. So they had to input everything. All they did was copy and paste that column. Yeah, maybe an hour's saving time. They still had to prepare the document.
I would entertain a motion to sign the letter of engagement with, let's see, Lindenberg Vogel Pierce Ferris.
I'll move the chairman to sign the letter of engagement for Lindenberg Vogel Pierce Ferris.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So our, our tax limit is $6,760,000?
Yes.
And we have the 2020 budget is $6,528,000? So we've got to get rid of a half a million dollars.
Yes. Part of that will occur when we do the center column. You know, with them not coming out, normally, normally what you do when you're sitting down doing a budget is you put in the dollar amount that we budgeted in the center column, which is the 2019 calendar year. But because we're halfway through the year, we can kind of see where we have spent the money and where we haven't and kind of go through and adjust there. So there are no adjustments in the center column because you guys asked to have everything put in exactly as is. So normally, when they come out here as auditing firm after they've inputted everything, then they go through with that, go through that with you to adjust the center column. When they adjust the center column, it pushes the cash balance up into the 2020, the cash carryover balance, so then therefore that reduces the overall tax dollars required. So basically, what we need to do is we need to get down $500,000 worth of tax dollars. Part of the problem is, is where we're spending, or I shouldn't say we're overspending, but we've spent down our cash balances, our cash carryovers. So as you do that, then you increase the levy. A prime example is very, one of the years that Steve Varbo was commissioner, he really wanted to spend down some of those cash carryovers because it looks like we have a lot of money. We started to spend down those cash carryovers, reduce the levy for three years, and then the fourth year, we ended up increasing the levy by 12 mils. So you don't want to reduce your cash carryovers too much or that ends up happening. So with that being said, what I told Jeff that I would do is, you know, I brought where we're at six months, we can go line by line item to see where we're at. We could probably cut in the employee benefits fund because of the lack of employees that we've had this year and the loss of employees. We could probably reduce the center column in employee benefits fund drastically.
When you say center column, is that the one, the, where the amount of 2019?
Yes, the one that says current year estimated in 2019.
Just wanted to make sure of that, thank you.
So now, you were looking at the front page though. The front page is the amount of taxes that will be required. So the front page is just 2020 budget. When you get to page 7. You know, a lot of times what we will do is we'll look at where we're at for cash revenues that come in because we don't know what we're going to receive and like to see if there's some bigger cash revenues that we've received that we've already met 100%. So if we start at page 7, we can kind of look through that. And I can, can do that part of it.
Can you, I'm not sure what, like, we're talking the ad valorem tax and I see it's, for 2018, it was 22,100,000 approximately. For 2019, it was 2,830,000 and we have X's for 2020. What, can you explain what that is?
Okay, the ad valorem tax is your property tax. It includes per, property tax and personal property. So I think I gave you guys your monthly report. So if you look at page 1 of that monthly report and you go down to expense object 4,000, that's your current real estate, then you have to add in 4,001, which is your current real estate. Your 1620M is broke out separately on the budgets and I think part of that is because of state requirements. Because they pull a lot of information off of our budgets when we submit them for the state legislature, so. So you would kind of have to add those two numbers together. The 20, the 2083 251 is what we actually levied for a mil levy. So that's an ad valorem tax.
That's an actual, that's an actual number.
Yes, so if you look at page this, page 7, go back to page 7.
You probably want to just get rid of those first six for now. That'll be like at the end, that's at the end.
Okay.
The working, the working line items are from 7 through the rest of it. Well, till, till they switch for, to landscape again. Page 16, 7 through 60.
So if you set page 7 and 7A side by side, the very bottom line on 7A is the amount of ad valorem tax that will be required to, to fund the budget as it stands right now. So that's where it says 2,830,000 in column 2019. Column 20's and it's Xed out, it's actually appearing at the bottom. So basically, what they do is they take all the revenues, take all the expenditures and they minus it out and the difference is what we levy. So at some point in time, we have to figure out where to cut. And I feel like maybe I need to have like a bulletin board and a PowerPoint slide to kind of explain this to you guys because.
So now, our total expenditure, this is on 7A, is 2655 and our tax is 2303, so now we're only cutting $250,000 as opposed to the 500 that's shown on the front page?
No, this is just county general.
Alright, okay.
That's only one component. The first page has.
I got it.
Road and bridge, not just weed, health department, ambulance, and police benefits.
We're still going to have 500,000.
Yes. And I can do what Jeff Normaly does to you. The taxes, you're really not going to be able to do too terribly much, but this is a part of the link work that he does. But he'll go through and he'll add and increase revenues if we need to. So for example, on your report, you have interest on investments have already earned 41,618 and we're budgeting 20,000. So we could increase it to what we've actually collected so far.
Where are we at there? Go back to that one.
Middle of your monthly report.
It would be on page 7, the very bottom, like five lines up.
Interest on idle funds?
Yes.
Where, where are we at now?
We have 47, or 41,618 collected.
And that's at 50%?
Yes, but that doesn't.
It won't be double, double that, but we're at 40.
So we could probably easily do 41.
Yeah.
Instead of 20,000?
Right, right.
With 41 something, okay.
So that's basically what you kind of have to do.
I'm also wondering about the delinquent tax. I think we had a surge, where are we on delinquent? Because I think we had a surge in that from publishing the tax sale. Because we have listed estimate 10,000, actual for prior year was 22,758. That should have, that we should at least be beyond that by now. And we may not go any further, but.
Let me see if he's built up and, otherwise I'll start adding.
Okay.
We have only collected 1787 of delinquent.
Out of 10 that we had listed?
Yep.
Okay, so that's a decrease.
But delinquents won't really actually occur and accumulate until now. So basically, like all of the, once they post the notice, they'll start collecting.
Okay.
Motor vehicle, we're about halfway through, so that's right on target.
Okay.
Local sales tax, we've gotten 112,000.
Halfway through the year?
Yeah.
That's good.
Interest on current taxes is 19,000. Don't know if we break that out. We may combine it with a bunch of other things.
Where's that line item? Where did you have interest on, what was on, interest on?
Delinquent taxes, or at current taxes.
Did you say 19,000?
Yes, we're at 19,000, but they must be including that with interest and charges on delinquent taxes.
That's a line item, so we're 19, that's nine over, that's good.
So we could probably do 20,000 here. Mortgage registration fees, she's at 15,290.
Okay.
And we have zero there right now.
That's because we were unsure how that was going to work, correct? Because they had changed the structure for fees. Do you have another, do you have an officer's fees or other licensing fees?
I would have to add about four, five, six things, so we're probably right on target for that. The transfer in from this, from motor vehicle was 21,242.
Already?
Yeah, that's just a one-time year, a year.
So that's done, so that was just 1,200 more? Do we have a gross earnings intangible tax number?
Um, it was 193.
Is that only 50% then?
No, that's the wrong one. Intangibles, is it 7731?
7731, that's good. And so all the other vehicle tax would, we're not really?
No. Be remiss if you change it.
Yeah. Local alcoholic liquor?
Liquor tax, 2314.
But that's for half the year? So.
It says we're at 44%, we should be at 50, so probably it should stay the same.
Or lower, we could just drop down to 5. That's all of them, isn't it?
Yeah.
What's in lieu of taxes, I or B?
In lieu of taxes, um, some counties have it.
1692?
I think that is, will sound like when it comes in, the Corps of Engineers has to pay us in lieu of tax. I'm pretty sure. So that would be our share of it.
And that ad valorem again, is that, that's property tax and registration fees?
Property tax, that's what goes out on the tax statement. So your property tax, your.
Vehicle registration, personal property.
Everything below that is how it's broken down. So your recreational vehicles, commercial vehicles, water.
So this is all, well, this is all part of that?
No, these are separate. These are in addition to what we tax out for, on the statement for everybody's property tax. So this would include residential and commercial.
So ad valorem is just property tax?
It's just real estate and personal property tax.
Personal property tax, okay.
The two of them combined.
I just wanted to get specific on that, thank you.
Who else do we have payment in lieu of taxes besides the wind thing?
The wind farm, does it come in as a tax offset?
But I'm just in county head in general. They're the only other ones?
Yes.
Okay.
What did we do for? Oh wait, okay, prior year actual, is that the expense line for the actual expense? Because I was just looking under the commission.
Yes, prior year actual is the actual expenses.
Okay.
That came out of the budget.
Okay. Okay, so where is the?
Can you explain again to me, Dawn or Alexis, on the, right, the very front page again, where the tax lid goes to 6,76,000? Why does it do that? Why is it 500,000 less than say our amount for this year?
What page are you on?
The very front page.
Because we spent on our cash carryovers, several components. We spent on our cash carryover.
Okay.
We normally adjust the center column. So last year, we would have adjusted the center column because he's not up here doing that and you wanted to do the prelims yourself and then send it to him.
Yeah.
It's going to be higher until we adjust the center column. Then once we adjust the center column, then it will be kind of reduced because the cash carryovers was less.
Okay.
So.
I guess.
Well, to start with the, the tax lid, we, the overall increase cannot be more than 1.5%. The only exceptions we can make is if we increase the budget in particular departments which are exempt, which would be law enforcement and I believe the county attorney. Those are the only two, emergency.
Ambulance.
Ambulance. So those three offices have the, we have the ability to increase their budget by more than the 1.5%, but none of the others. So overall, what I had suggested and what we did is just plug in all the same numbers from last year because that would guarantee that we're not doing an increase for any one particular department by more than 1.5%. There was no increase at all to start there.
We could select them individually if we want to.
Yes, then, yes, then you can manipulate each.
The other thing that plays a component, Randy, is that if we didn't collect as much money as what we had anticipated and budgeted for, then it creates a lower cash carryover for this year, which then reduces the amount that you can levy.
The tax lid gets lower.
Part of your budget is estimating how much income you're going to have, which means you're not taxing for that portion of it. So if we estimated that we were going to collect $200,000 in sales tax, but we really only collected 117,000, then you're out that 85, or 80, some thousand two to compensate, so you didn't tax for it by collecting it. You were expecting it to be generated through revenue. So our, our guessing game of how much we're going to get in depends on how many vehicles are transferred, how many people buy new vehicles and it, what, you know, what the tax rate is.
A lot of that's based on last year's budget.
Exactly, it's all based on last year.
You're kind of suggesting next year is going to be similar to last year with a little changes.
Exactly. Like right now, we're actually up over, for local sales tax, we, we are well over 50% of what we expected to have been brought in by July of 2019. So sales are up locally in the county right now, but that doesn't guarantee that that trend continues through the end of the year. So we still may only hit 175,000. The actual from 18 was 200,000, but we dropped it to 175. I don't remember that discussion, but. Okay, so. Okay, so... Dawn, why did we drop your election budget? Do you remember? That's only a few thousand, but I'm just wondering.
Cause this is a smaller year.
But then we're gonna have a general next year.
I thought we had, I thought we had left it the same, but...
I mean, it's only a couple thousand, I'm, I'm just looking, I'm here on seven again, seven, eight.
Seven, eight, okay.
I...
Oh, I see, okay.
I was just looking at where, where the increases are, what we did decrease. We created the human resources budget, which was not there in the prior year. And the appropriations, we really need to look at that too, because that is one point one-six million.
What does that all go for?
So that's all of the commission, um, I don't know how you wanna word that, it's not per department, it's all of the stuff that we're funding out of...
Above and beyond the department.
Right, yeah, the departments are here, all listed out in each line item. One is for the salaries, and then you have contractual, which would be all of your expenses relating to anything that's recurring. And then commodities or purchases, and then capital outlays, your rollover, so that you can have funds for additional purchases, vehicles. A lot of people use their capital outlay for the building, if we have like a separate building for that particular department, like the health department or something like that. So, our, here's, here is, here are the appropriations. Under page seven D, mental health sixteen thousand six hundred, economic development one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty-nine, historical society forty-five hundred, hospital maintenance five hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and forty-four, special drug and alcohol is seventy-five thousand, occupational center OCCK seventy-five sixty-nine, soil conservation twenty-two thousand, um, CASA seven thousand. Did we really only do twenty-six sixty the year before, Dawn? That seems not correct.
No, um, we did, well...
That doesn't seem right.
I think that probably, cause we didn't spend, um, four thousand dollars in the special alcohol and drug, so I'm kinda wondering if we got the wrong bill, bill taken out, the wrong object code.
Okay.
I'm looking now, or they did when they were inputting it.
Okay, yeah, cause it's one, yeah, okay, that went from four thousand, one thousand. Uh, nursing home one hundred and twenty thousand, juvenile detention five hundred, abandoned cemeteries two thousand, that's the mowing. LAP program thirteen thousand five hundred, that's the one that we contracted with Salina to do, um, what's that stand for?
Local emergency, or local environmental protection.
Environment, okay, so we contracted with Salina to do that, which is maybe something we can consider to do with the emergency management. Um, city of Lincoln rec twenty-five thousand, our liability insurance line item forty-one thousand, the fair ten thousand. Um, computer contract, why did that significantly decrease? Do you remember, Dawn? It went from eighty-four to fifty-six.
My guess is, is the wrong line item again was chosen, the wrong object code.
So we really need them in here, okay. Um, promotion and advertising two thousand, uh, north central regional planning thirty-five hundred, bus fund twenty thousand, that was our match to the total budget there, and transfer to the rescue squad. And I'm still confused about that after all this time, the transfer to the rescue squad fund, is that a public, publicly voted?
Yes, they gotta have a vote. And that's what helps purchase their equipment.
I don't see EMS on any of these.
Um...
EMS is a separate fund.
Oh, out of all the?
Those are just, seven D is just the, whatever they call that, the subsidies we do for different entities. Each, each, um, keep going, cause you'll see back here, noxious weed, law enforcement, county health, here, ambulance seven twelve, number twelve, page twelve.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm, oh, no, wait, that's the income though, hold on, that's the income.
No, you got it, it's, uh...
But that's the income page, I'm looking for the, you want, you want the expense page, right?
Yeah.
Yes, the CASA got taken out of, um, special alcohol and drug, so that one would be zero, and then the CASA one would be corrected.
Well, why did, but we had one thousand, so was it zero really, or was it?
Yeah, it was zero.
Okay.
Paying anything out of it.
Okay, so CASA was seven thousand?
Yeah. Twenty-six sixty plus forty-three forty is seven thousand.
Okay, um...
I mean, I'm sure that's the same on the computer, we probably just took out a forty-three hundred.
Yeah. Now I'm still looking. I don't see, what, what page is the ambulance service on? Because...
If you go to page one, and you look, it will tell you what page it's on, and you look, find my page one.
Sixty-five, six-one-one-three. Page number twelve, oh, I was, right, I got that? Oh, it's right underneath, I'm sorry. All the, the income is at the top, and then the expense is at the bottom, under, it's split in half, so it shows you which, it shows you how much portion of ad valorem, what portion of motor vehicle, what, what dollar amount comes out of the, um, like what is generated, ambulance runs generated ninety-four thousand two hundred and ninety-four, we estimated. There's another one we can, we can adjust, Dawn, can you give us the fifty percent of the?
Can we just do one at a time?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I just didn't know, see the ambulance at all.
So like, this, this is the income side, up here, and then this is the expense side, so...
Okay. Yeah, Dawn, sorry, we, we need to stay organized here if we can, yeah. I just wanted to see, find it, that's all.
I would like him to change that personal services word to the same as what all the other budgets are, which I believe says salaries. That's confusing too. Yeah, everybody else says salaries except for that department.
So only five hundred, or five months of the next tax bill got taken out of the right line item, the others came out of forty-three hundred, so that would increase the, the year, up, back up to the eighty-four thousand.
So it stayed?
Yeah, so basically, what, what has happened is forty-three hundred, which is on page seven B courthouse general, it's included in the contractual expenses there. Instead of being included in the, that's the things that we fix, as we're going through.
Okay, so, the contractual under which?
Courthouse general.
Courthouse general.
Okay.
At the bottom down there.
Okay.
It'll be included in that, I'll have to look and verify that if possible.
Okay, so right off the bat, if we wanna start with our departments, I can tell you that doing no increase doesn't allow for any salary increase and a raise. So, under all the line items for salaries for each department, if we're going to calculate, we need to look at their budget and see what they did. If we're going to pre-assume that we do the fifty cent allotment, which is what they have done in the past. Um, but there again, we're trying to cut, not increase, so we need to talk about that. But, for example, let's skip that one. Let's go to the health department and have that first. So she has, for the health department, the two thousand twenty proposed budget number for salaries and wages. Although hers decreased overall because she anticipated different revenue, I think, so that's a bad example. But let's just say two thousand and eighteen was one forty-two four eighty, two thousand nineteen was one fifty-eight two sixty-four. So her increase is only one fifty-eight eight fifty-two under the salaries and wages line item.
Was that at the fifty cents, or was that at the twenty-five cents?
I believe, I don't see a note. I believe it was for fifty cents. She decreased her supplies by two thousand, increased commodities by four hundred, um, and the contractual went down significantly, it looks like, emergency preparedness and maintenance and general expense she decreased significantly, and then grants. Yeah, she did fifty, it's, there's a note on here, it was fifty cents. Okay.
You'd have to add in the long term.
Okay, so under salaries, one fifty-eight two sixty-four, and she has...
It'd actually be one sixty-one two eighty-eight, because you have to add in the long term, cause we pay back.
Okay, so tell me that number again, one?
One sixty-one two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight. Okay. And then what did she have under contractual, fifty, is that right then, her total under contractual fifty-four two fifty? I don't understand why she has the grants as an expense, wouldn't that be income? Or is that what she's paying into?
That's what she's paying out, so, so when they get other grants, they put the expenses there, they can track it.
It's their match portion?
No. Okay, so in their revenue part, she has all these grants?
Yeah.
And you're bringing your revenue in, but then she has to expend certain components of it.
Oh, oh, okay.
So that is the expenditure of the grant.
Okay, so the, so it's fifty-four two fifty. And then commodities, what's she have in her commodities? Eleven, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, seven. And then, her portion of the appropriation she has in there still is eight ninety-seven, no, she has that under capital outlay.
Was that what they were asking?
Well, the eight ninety-seven she has under capital outlay matches the eight ninety-seven that has the appropriation to the senior care act, so do you think that's what that means?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just leave that in there.
Was that the right dollar amount?
It is the same dollar amount, it's just a different line item, and then zero budgeted to transfer to the capital outlay. So then that is... Let me get my calculator here. One sixty-one, two eighty-eight, plus fifty-four two fifty. Okay, so her line item changes from two forty forty-seven to two twenty-eight one thirty-five. Two twenty-eight one thirty-five. That's utilizing the budget that she gave us, which was an overall decrease. By about twelve thousand. Cause the actual, well, we don't have the actual for this year, where are we on the actual for this year? Is she at fifty percent?
She's gonna have to add the two hundred, the mileage that she has at two hundred dollars, you have to add that to contractual. So contractual would be fifty-four three fifty.
Fifty-four three fifty?
Yeah.
Wait.
I don't know if she does mileage like she does.
Yeah, that's under, okay, so fifty-four, but that's only adding one hundred, you mean fifty-four four fifty? So adding two hundred would make it two twenty-eight three thirty-five. Okay. Now... Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Oh my goodness. Okay. Health fund. Our year to date used is fifty, looks like fifty-one, fifty-two percent. Am I reading that right, Dawn? Did you look that? Number seventy-nine, remaining a hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and seven out of...
Yet you did it.
Two forty forty-seven.
Are you looking at a particular line item, or?
No, I'm just looking at her, her report through July, her mid-year.
She spent forty-four point nine four percent of it, if that's what you're, I don't know what you're looking at.
Why does it say percent used fifty-one point nine six? Oh, oh, that's the, that's the area agency on aging.
You guys are looking through the month of July, I'm only looking at the month of June, so...
Okay, so, I'm sorry, it's actually forty-two point three three percent, because I was looking at the area agency on aging expense included in that, which is a one-time fee. So that changes, so, okay, so she's under, so that's good. Okay, that changes that one, that's for county health. Let's go to law enforcement. Commodities, weed. I don't have my law enforcement budget, do I? Do you guys have all the separate budgets that they brought to us?
I didn't bring mine. None of me does, home with me.
You got it all done.
I thought I had it in here.
Page thirty-nine and the monthly thing will give you an idea.
Okay, here's, I'll, I'll jump to commodities then, which I have, they did this, so that, where's the other one? It's gotta be here. Okay, so commodities, where's that listed? Eleven. Eleven bridge, special bridge, which is weed.
Did you find it?
No.
No, we could do a different one. We can combine.
Well, I'm not, okay, general, no, I found, I have the commodities one, we can do, that's part of their budget, the sheriff's department.
Law enforcement, special equipment, the budget is sixty-five thousand. It's part of the law enforcement budget here. If you look under the middle of it.
Thank you, Dawn.
And just separate it out.
Okay. But where is the actual communications?
It's behind, I am stapled them, but I'm assuming you, yours is stapled.
Isn't this just for the communications department?
No. I don't know what that is. This is what I have.
Who did this one?
I don't know, did you try to use my form and I didn't know it?
No. Oh, this is part of this one, I'm sorry. That's part of the emergency management one, that's not the right.
It should be stapled and the front page was this one.
Yeah, I left it up here.
That has their pages.
Let me skip that one, let's go, I have the noxious weed one right here. Let's go to that. Refugees. Did you do a budget for the refuge, Dawn, or did you just give us a dollar amount?
Uh, he did a budget for you.
Here's noxious weed.
They really need to go too much over what they get for revenues because we don't, we have taxes for them.
Okay.
They're solely user-based fees, so, but I'm pretty sure him and Dan brought in theirs together.
Okay, I have noxious weed. Okay. So salaries and wages, we have, let's see, salary is thirty-seven, it was at thirty-seven. Now, we have the current year estimate for twenty nineteen at thirty-seven, but it has the twenty. Oh, okay, because the request was forty. Okay, approved thirty-seven, yeah, and then request was forty. But that, but if I remember correctly, we are not billing from noxious weed out of the highway department for that particular employee that sprays, correct?
Give me.
Let me correct you, the highway department had not been billing noxious weed for the labor.
Okay, so there's no need to increase for that unless we were going to begin doing that, which would take them, which would probably.
I can tell you what happened. After you separated the departments, Dan didn't have a sprayer anymore and so Dan's been trying to spray. So Dan will be forced to hire somebody part-time or you guys will need to do something.
Well, they were never billing it to begin with, so why would they quit doing it if it wasn't even being billed out to them? That's interesting.
The highway department did not spray anymore after you guys separated the departments.
Right, but what I'm saying is all we did was say that they're not combined under the same director, the, the budgets were never combined.
I know, but they stopped spraying.
Yeah.
So my point being is you guys are either gonna need to hire somebody part-time like we have in the past, increase the budget to cover the part-time employee to work temporarily during the summertime or do something different.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we've been pulling a guy out of the highway department however many days a week, for however many months a year, then we just decreased the highway department by that dollar amount. I mean, they obviously didn't need that position because they weren't working for the highway department at the time and they weren't even billing out the hours to the other department. But out of spite, obviously, not sending someone.
Like you're wanting them to bill out of that department, so you may need to increase that budget to cover expenditure.
Well, we need to see where he is.
Or the highway department, one or the other.
Yeah, we gotta pay for it one way or the other, either the highway department or in the, uh, noxious weed department. Cause we need the, uh, employee when we need them. So one place or another, we gotta do that. Maybe we should talk to Mr. Heena.
Did we, about that transfer document, did you have any mention of funding when you moved it over there?
There was no combined funding, that's, that's why that happened. They, they put all three departments, the landfill, the noxious weed and the highway department, under one title of a director. But that director was not doing the budgets for those departments, was not giving any kind of uh, assignments for training or anything over those other departments. In fact, they weren't even inter-departamentally billing each other. They were just borrowing time, which there was no advantage to the budget doing it that way whatsoever. There was no crossover in anything on paper.
When we gave the mission to the folks out west of town, what did we tell them about budget? Did they have to fund for that or not?
We didn't tell them nothing.
Okay.
What west of town?
The landfill.
Landfill people were the, uh, noxious weed.
They're the ones that told me that they did their own budgets.
Yeah, but they, but, but the highway department furnished the employee for the spraying and that's what we're saying. Once we got rid of the the, uh, highway, the works department, the director of public works, that took away that employee, which was helping coming from the highway department to help Mr. Heena out or for spraying. And now we're not doing that anymore, Dawn says.
Well, but that's, that's our choice.
Yeah, well, that's fine, but we gotta figure out who's, if we're gonna get, let Dan hire a part-time employee?
Right.
Or if we're still gonna have the highway department help on that. That's all.
Right.
We gotta figure that out and that's all she's saying, yeah.
Because if the highway department isn't going to, then Dan needs to have the budget.
Dan needs to have that much budget extra to pay for a, a part-time employee for.
This is where you would wanna bring Dan in and talk to you.
Right.
Cause I can tell you, he told me he has no employee and he doesn't know how he's gonna get done.
But if you transfer the function, you gotta transfer the financial responsibility too.
That's what I'm trying to say. There was no, there was no financial anything. They were basically just borrowing someone's time.
But it was, we were borrowing it out of the highway department, so they could decrement their budget by that amount.
Exactly, exactly.
But then you got to transfer that same amount to Dan.
Exactly.
Yeah. And we should probably.
But what I'm saying is they weren't billing, so we have no idea how much time it costs.
I understand that.
Well, we could, Dan could probably give us an estimate of how many days he uses his employees and then we'd get a guess on hours and maybe go from there and appropriate the money. We should probably, before we make a decision, I know, we should ask Dan what his opinion is on doing this. Or what, because they're the ones doing the job and we should get their input.
We're gonna take the money out of the highway department because they're not doing that.
Exactly.
We decrease their budget by that amount and give it to Dan.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. Okay.
And that's all Dawn was saying.
Um, so noxious weed, this looks a little concerning and, um, okay. Payroll, let's see. Payroll. Year to date, let's see.
Payroll's what's at fifty?
They've used fifty-five point four three percent.
Of payroll?
Yeah.
And commodities, only seven point one seven percent. I wonder why that is. Wouldn't that, chemicals is.
Yeah, they probably haven't been buying any spray.
No, chemicals is a separate line item, that's a hundred percent used, it looks like. And then contractual services, only twenty-eight point four three percent. So.
What other chemicals would they use out there?
How many?
What other chemicals besides the noxious spray?
None, that is what it is. He, he did a bid and we spent, let's see. He got bids. He spent twenty, in two thousand eighteen, he spent twenty-five, one fifty-three. So it looks like in two thousand nineteen, he spent twenty-seven, five fifty-one. So that's just chemicals. Chemicals, two thousand fifteen, fifteen thousand, two thousand sixteen, eighteen thousand, two, two thousand seventeen, fourteen thousand, two thousand eighteen, twenty-five thousand and two thousand nineteen, looks like twenty-seven thousand. And then their phone line.
We get some of that back though in chemical sales to the public, six thousand dollar.
Okay, so this is sixteen. So twenty-five oh seven plus sixteen. Okay, so that salary line item doesn't include anyone else. That's just for the noxious weed director, that thirty-seven.
And that, if we're gonna add a part-time employee, we better figure out how much extra that'd be.
So the fifty cents at twenty eighty is another thousand forty. So that would make it thirty-eight, forty. Is there a longevity pay on that one, Dawn?
Yes, he'll have longevity, but I'm sure he didn't calculate it.
Can, is that something you can do or?
Not easily.
Okay. Less longevity.
When you finish with noxious weed, Madam Chair, I recommend we quit.
Okay. Okay, so noxious weed. We'll have to adjust the salary line item to be thirty-nine.
Well, we're also, we're going to talk to Dan about possible part-time employee we need to add that into?
Yes, but we can also do that under contractual if we wanted to. We can either contract out of the highway department or we can contract subcontract to someone.
Maybe we should discuss it with him too, before we make that decision.
Right, I'm just adjusting for his, his income.
Yeah, for him himself, okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, this is one.
Because we.
Department head.
We should talk to him and see what he thinks is best, easiest for him to operate.
Not planning on leaving all this stuff right here laid out as it is.
Yeah, we gotta come back, so.
Okay, so we had no budget for the capital outlay. And we had something must have happened there too, Dawn, because under commodities, we have thirty-four hundred, but ten thousand for the next year and then forty-two thousand and only thirty thousand for the next year. So do you think something came out of?
That was contractual we were on there.
But see how these aren't, these don't match up. He should have been a lot closer to ten thousand if he had planned on it out of his commodities and then he was over by twelve thousand, thirteen thousand for the.
Capital out, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, contractual is the first one and then capital out, commodities is the next one.
Yeah.
His chemical sales, um, comes out of a separate line item and so it's just depends on how the auditor combines the two line items.
For under commodities?
Yeah, cause he has a.
And he sells something to the public.
Normally, anything that starts with the forty-three is combined together under contractual. Anything that starts with the forty-two is combined. So if the departments report more, but your budget only reports four.
Okay.
So that's how.
It's combined into that line item, okay. Okay. So he had the same, he had, he had a five thousand dollar increase under commodities, but that is gonna take us over the one point five percent for sure. And then he had the same num, the same ten thousand for contractual. And then he had a request for ten thousand under capital outlay, but that again takes us over the one point five percent. So remember, the one point five percent is, is on a lid here, so whatever we're going to do to contract out that other portion has to be within whatever we're doing, so. We need to have a form when they fill out the budget to list, like LaDonna listed, all of her, her contract, her contracts are here and her commodities are here. Now, they don't have a number with them for us to look at.
An amount.
Right, but it would be nice to see, like she has Nextech, so we're supposed to be switching over. I mean, I guess she might not be, right, Dawn? Is she not switching to Eagle?
No, she will be.
Oh, she is?
Everybody will be going.
So then it'd be nice to see from one year to the next what happened to that contract in the, in the dollar amount.
Let me rephrase that. That Nextech on that is for computers.
Okay.
AT&T would be your telephone and Eagle.
Okay. Okay, so.
I move the turn to the county maintenance.
Resis, resis.
Recommand over there.
Okay, one second. I, well, he, he had a motion.
Well. Well, they've, I've got some discussion first.
I'd like to at least take the questions.
I'll second, I'll second. Could go to the county highway department, right?
Yeah, but let's, if we got issues, let's do it.
So the discussion is, we will do this as soon as we answer some questions, the discussion portion. Those in favor, vote aye. Aye, motion carries.
Yes, on Mr. Doe's job, are you really planning on doing that as a part-time or trying to do that as a part-time job?
Uh, we haven't had any discussion on it at this point.
You have.
No, we, he said he turned in his resignation on Friday, but this is the first.
Well, I know, but I mean, I thought, I thought you were wanting to go part-time on him or move him to another deal at one time.
We actually had him helping in the highway department on some of their FEMA paperwork recently, because they were turning in FEMA, um, reimbursement paperwork for some of the water damage and flood damage.
I just hope you guys just, well, I don't know, maybe none even ever listened to him, but I mean, not to him, but I mean, he does that, that's quite a job in there. So you need to, I mean, for weather and grants, for bar departments, for a rescue squad, for ambulance, he does a lot of, a lot of stuff. So I just hope you understand that.
It is, it is a state mandate that you have to, that you have to provide for an emergency management department. Many other counties, if you look into it, he actually reported the statistics to us one time, but many other counties have like a combined position. Um, we actually interviewed for, we actually interviewed for the EMS department and a few of those people who applied were qualified to do both. So it's not unheard of that you have someone that is certified that sits in a, in another seat within the county. Did you have another question?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask questions after you return because I have a question that Mr. Gableman stated. I have rebuttal. So I will ask when you get back, what you guys need to go.
Well, we have an interview to do when we get back.
Okay, my, my comment is, the, uh, the commissioner should interview employees because the department head may retaliate against the employees. Because I've seen that in the military, some of the time military officers are you-know-what and they will pull rank. Okay, my, my comment is, the, uh, the commissioner should interview employees, because the department head may retaliate against the employee, because I've seen that in the military. Some of the time, military officers are you-know-what, and they will pull rank on the lower people. And they will not allow this employee or person to advance or to express his opinion. So now we've got a problem, because that officer, I've seen him do that, he'll pull rank on you. Want to get him?
No.
I've seen it.
Yeah, but I don't know what service you were in, but you weren't a very good service, but we have got to go with those.
Yeah. Okay, we will recess and reconvene at the highway department. Thank you. We have exactly a half an hour until our interview, so.
We could have a summary of what we thought about our meeting. I thought it was a good discussion. I know maybe we didn't, I just event with them, and they convinced us, and I thought it was good.
Yeah, that was the whole idea.
Yeah, and I know you, you know, I don't know if it's gonna change policy on what we do on anything, but I, I mean, they were thanking me when I'm leaving, and, uh, because, you know, they felt like we appreciated them finally.
They gotta feel like you're part of the team.
One, one thing I wanna say about this, and I know, we should do this with all departments, and we should give all departments chicken dinners too, because it ain't fair we give one department that, 'cause I can hear some other department now saying, yeah, they, we don't get shit. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that, but that's what I'm afraid they'll say.
I don't have any problem with it.
Because, and I know the highway department's where we have a major issue right now, so we wanted to try to cool, cool it, I wanted to try to, you know, calm them down, but we don't wanna, we, but, but I think all departments we should talk to, just like we did today, if you got an issue, we'll discuss it. You know?
Yeah.
Because sometimes, we don't, you know, a lot of us don't even know our employees, one-on-one, hardly.
Right.
And I think it's just to meet them, say hi, how you doing, because then they feel like.
Well, you put a face to the name too, because sometimes I might ask who's doing what, but it doesn't mean that I'm interacting with that one.
Because employees, I was, I was, you know, when I was employee with a director, I used, he had two, three hundred people, and they'd come and say, shake your hand and thank you for your work. That made me so good. So I think it did today to that.
Right, well, and I, they had a lot of good input. I think, you know, I don't totally agree with all of it, but.
Well, they're leave and their vacation and that.
Well, and the one thing I was thinking about, you know, it'd probably be cheaper for us to sub out the mowing and not sub out the culvert cleaning, and as to vice versa. I mean, that's just my mo, thinking monetarily.
If we could find somebody to do the sub, they said too, somebody in, uh, was doing canopies, Liz was saying, and it was pretty expensive. I don't know if we'd save a lot of money to sub out the mowing.
But it's, to me, it's not as much about saving the money as reorganizing their time, right, because look at the bridge issues that we have, the culver issues, that's another example, you know, but I do think we need to look at the mower situation. I think they've had, they've spent a lot of unnecessary time keeping those tractors running.
Well, the tractors are all worn out.
Right.
We, we're gonna have to upgrade us some. And wouldn't that be new? You could get a hundred twenty horse tractor and like a forty-four thirty, uh, like a nineteen ninety, in the nineteen eighties and nineties for probably twenty-five to thirty thousand bucks. And they'd be, they'd be okay.
Yeah, and yet they said two out of five are okay. But one thing I didn't think we got to was what they wanna see in the leadership, because, you know, we have these interviews to do, um.
Wade just told me that.
We probably needed an eight-hour discussion.
A lot of them guys said, we've been kinda doing our own thing anyway. I think they want some guy to, when you make the big decisions, on, on policy and that, you know, I don't think, these guys wanna be micromanaged either by a director, unless they need help. If you got a new hire that needs help, then they maybe need to be micromanaged.
Well, and I would like to see.
If you guys have been under twenty years, they don't need to be told what to do.
But there are some things that are maybe not done well, just because it's never been corrected, or it's never been identified as a problem. That's where.
Well, that may, that may be, but I think our new director's gotta determine that.
Right, no, yeah, not me. I'm just saying, that's the assumption, that the person comes in and says, okay, well, I'd like it done this way, because this is according to my plan. And maybe it's not the way the guy's done it for fifteen years, but you have to adapt a little bit.
Well, if it helps, if it helps, uh, productive, you know, if it helps productivity and efficiency, yes, I don't know who'd be against it, right?
Well, some people just don't like change, just because they don't like change.
That's true, but if you can prove to them, this is gonna help us save money and do the job better and faster and cheaper, then you, if you explain it to them, they should say, oh, okay, but you know, that's, I don't know why nobody, and I know some of these guys don't like these tablets, they think they're toys and.
Yeah, but I didn't hear as much negativity about it as I thought I would.
Well, I talked to some, and they don't like it, but I, but I know, why not? It ain't that hard to get on there, take a picture of X-ray and hundred twentieth, and show a picture of a culvert, and they say, well, you know, whatever. A, a lot of them are just afraid of a computer, what it looked like to me.
Yeah. Or don't wanna take the extra time to do it, but that's part of your downtime at the end of the day, is just updating the logistics of it.
How long does it take? If you see a culvert's bad, and you stop there, it takes you two minutes to take a picture, and type a little message saying, this is an X-ray and hundred twentieth, you know?
Exactly.
Well, I'm looking for a mile and quarter to my house. I think we got six culverts.
Oh, they're all over, and they're all plugged, a lot of them are plugged in.
It's gonna take you.
Forever.
Five minutes on each end, and you're talking an hour just to take a picture.
Well, if you have that many at one time, yeah. I'm just normally.
But the thing is, once you do it the first time, you can just go back and update. You don't necessarily have to do every spot every time.
I don't know, yeah, a bunch of culverts being plugged, and I know there's a lot of, uh, you know, some of them need replaced if they're totally plugged. That is an issue, because when they plug them, we have to hub these, these hard rings, and they wash, and then they go right over the road, and then they wash the gravel off, and there you go.
We end up doing more work by not doing.
By not having them corrected and fixed.
This is exactly the way of a dam slide.
But it's gonna take time, and we don't have to do them all at once. Sometimes everybody thinks you guys go out there and do it now, all of it. Do one or two every now and then, if you see another one, you know, over five years, we'll do them fixed.
Well, my, my theory is, do the main priority roads first. If you have a highly trafficked road, I always use mine as an example, because I live on the school road, that has buses, ma, major mail route, a lot of people hauling their wheat, everything goes down my road. That should be one of the first ones that gets fixed after it rains and it's sloppy, one of the first ones that has all the culverts cleaned out. It's just common sense, because it's so highly used.
Yeah, you're right, the main road should be priority.
And it's more dangerous, because you have more traffic, you have oncoming traffic with two semis sometimes, I mean.
I think these guys know to do the main routes first, mail routes, bus routes.
When they're blading, but I'm talking about all of it.
Oh, maybe.
You know, get, get the culverts cleaned out, get rid of the big problems.
Well, again, that's what we need to talk to the director candidates about, that.
Having a.
Well, that, we want that to be done.
It's like a maintenance schedule.
One thing we need to figure out is a equipment replacement plan for about ten or fifteen years.
Yeah, and the budget for it.
Well, that's the problem is, no matter how you do it, if I buy a new used bulldozer, you go and replace one of them, but we probably ought to develop a schedule, and before the addition to highway department, they all have equipment that runs out, wears out.
Well, didn't Lexis, Manteria, and Algen were here with you? You guys had a plan, didn't you, where you were buying like a new piece of grader every year type of a thing, or new dozer, kind of, and you were selling, you kept new, new equipment on warranty?
But that's the problem.
You don't, but you don't like that.
They created, they created a turnover, where they were gonna buy two new graders every year, but by the time we needed the last two, you were supposed to replace the first two in the same year. Well, nobody budgeted for that, nobody calculated it. It was poorly executed, so then you lose your buyback price on your original purchase. So then what? Now you're behind a year, then you're gonna be behind two years, then you're gonna get yourself in the same situation, because by the time you can afford to finish out the cycle, you need an excavator, you need new tractors.
Yeah, that'll accumulate the, the capital. We need, say, two hundred thousand dollars a year, whatever it's gonna be for all the county.
You had a budget just for equipment, didn't you, in that way? Well, they have a equipment budget.
But we've been, we've been, there's a half a million in the highway department that was budgeted specifically for that, so it's already there, and this year we haven't used it yet.
Yeah, I'll get something started on that. Well, I'll let the new guy figure out what he needs and pay that in.
Well, right, you heard today, we probably need tractors for, for mowers, 'cause they're, and that one, that one Sheldon Federkin's driving, what's he driving? He's driving something that's really dangerous with one brake and impossible to steer. You know, we don't need an accident out there.
They need a new grid tractor, tractor drive, if, if you have a big mower tractor, you get a bunch of traction, you need a front wheel assist on it.
We should have front wheel assist.
You're walking a hundred twenty-five, thirty-four.
Well, depends on, yeah, a hundred, but like mine, I got forty-seven thirty-five, it's a nineteen ninety-three, and it's a good tractor, it's probably only works like thirty-five to forty now, and it's still damn good. Uh, I think we could buy some used like that. I'd say you could buy two.
You have, like, the payout of longevity pay from December, so that we can see about what every employee got in longevity needs to.
Problem is, you don't want to.
Then they go, then the transmission, transmission engine go out.
I don't think that's budgeting.
They're gonna use these a lot.
Yeah, they go through a lot of.
Our takeoff works.
In January.
And they, yeah, they run hard, because they got a lot of miles.
So it'd be.
You're right, so then it's a newer, maybe it's better.
We got the money, we need to develop this schedule, and we can start doing so.
Well, again, if the director should have a big input on that, but we will help and assist. We can say, here's our budget, and here's what we'd like to cut out of the plan, but then let that director actually implement it. That's what we need to ask today here.
We're excited about getting a new guy in here. We'll try to fix it up and patch it up. I think you got good troops over there. There seem to be a happy bunch of troops.
Well, they're very good, and they're competent, you know, and they've, they've done it, a lot of them, not, you know, some aren't, but most of them are, I guess. They're all, and we need to talk to.
These applications are closed session, right?
Say again?
Application for closed session.
Yes.
Well, Liz gave us that letter, they were wanting to process the recorder.
Here's your questions. Well, we can't do that for them and not do that for everyone, so I.
I'm gonna pass it down.
Well, we gotta talk about what you'd like to do.
I think there's a few extras just in case.
These are.
Questions.
How, who gets what here?
Well, you just pass it down to one for each of them. One, three, I got, she just got an error here and there.
You'll need one for each. I need three, two sets for one for each chair.
Yeah.
One for, he needs two, I need, you, you need two, and I need two.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I got three.
And then I got a couple extras just in case.
Oh, okay.
In case you have a hoop in here.
Okay. Well, let's review those here. We do half a bucket, we give everybody a quarter of those across the board.
We budgeted in.
Well, maybe we should just do that, and then we could maybe re-solve that.
I'm more, I, if you're gonna do everything across the board, I'm not in favor of doing the, the absolute max. If it's across the board, I think it should be more middle of the row. If that's gonna be a, a problem solver technique, I mean. What's the difference if you do all or nothing then? Nobody's getting rewarded, nobody's getting penalized.
Well, if we have the budget for a quarter for everybody, I think we should do it.
I, I would rather talk about consolidating some positions over there and giving everybody a raise out of eliminating a position, and with the explanation that we expect the output to be the same.
Where, do you have a, well, again, I think that should be, for the director, a little more so than us, right?
Well, I think if you make cuts, then he'll have to adjust to them. If you don't make the cuts, then he's gonna have a harder time. And then you're gonna whack it off, you're gonna tell him what's wrong.
Sounds like they're consolidating already. Sounds like they talk among each other and says, we need rock here. They're already doing that, without us telling them to.
Mm-hmm.
Which is okay, if it works.
Yeah. Dawn, what do they have under contractual for the landfill? Why is it so high?
Um, they would have free and damn, so.
The money is payment.
The city, yeah, it goes out, and we also have to pay the, um, city of Salina, that's considered a charge.
So then Kerry didn't fill out the revenue, the anticipated revenue. I'm just looking at the landfill, I've got on the budget.
Being on the responsibility of the county.
Landfill sounds good to me.
I also don't see these line items for commodities or.
I'll tie my back as to.
I can see the reflection in your machine there.
I'm on the sleep, so I'll stay still. Feel like you should make departments be responsible for their stuff. And I'll show you for ourselves.
They all received this form, right, that you sent out for the budget proposals?
Yeah, and part of that just to see.
Who do we have first, Mr.? Oh, we can't say who.
What does reserve for future period mean under the landfill?
That's his excess, so that's probably what we should be transferring into capital improvement. When I said they're not contributing capital improvement fund, so technically their equipment should not be in. Instead, what they've been doing is pulling it into that account, and because it's not going to.
Now, is that invested in idle funds, like all the rest of it, or?
Yeah, so they, so they wouldn't draw any interest or any income out. But, so you can't, basically what they're doing is giving you the budget authority, that if something would happen major, and you needed that money to use out there, you have it to use.
And that's your line item.
Yeah. But it's just basically all to carry over.
So we can move it into capital outlet, or capital improvement?
You can move it into capital improvement if you wanted to. A very, very long time ago, landfill was separate, then it was combined into county general, and they reseparated it back out, uh.
By statute?
No, I think that's just what they decided to do. And the, um, capital improvement fund is primarily money that comes from leftover county general funds, so no fund, so before, they, when they were inside the county general, they were.
Contributing.
Yeah.
So this has just been sitting there, that rollover?
Yes.
Why is it lower assumed for twenty twenty then?
Well, because they're assuming that they're spending their full budget.
I'm doing the landfill budget.
Oh.
I'm glad that they're just all wages and.
Spending a hundred percent of full budget.
Yeah, but it's dropped by ten thousand, just in that reserve. Fund.
That's the maximum that you can increase.
So it's a six percent, is that?
That's at the one point five percent percentage adjustment increase. So if this is for, this should be a specific fund. It doesn't say which.
Well, they say it's percentage adjustment. Does that could be a percentage or a dollar?
Well, they're calculating, the form is calculating it for you. One point five percent is the, is the form, and they build that into the form. See, the state provides those forms, so they've already figured out the number, and then you do the form.
It already self-calculates it.
It's been seen to be. Percentage adjustment increase, twelve times three.
Okay, mine says. Percentage adjustment factor, percentage adjustment increase, twelve times three.
Okay.
Sixty-seven, and then you have the consumer price index is one point five.
So that should not be a dollar sign there?
Yes, it is, um, twelve times three.
So that's six thousand dollars, but that.
That's the.
I don't keep it right now, that doesn't make sense.
Well, they're state boards. You're not supposed to make sense.
They don't, okay, they, they make their goal.
What this is doing, this particular form, it's first of all, determining whether or not, what percentage of the value.
what percentage of the value increase is by an increase in value. And then what percentage, and then you're allowed to have a certain percentage. So your personal property is listed, you have your 2019 minus your 2018. Those all go into factors of that. I don't really know what the 12 times 3 is. I think it is 3 times.
This seems, their forms seem to be inconsistent, I think. Because if you come down on 14, it says line 3 times line 14. And then line 10 divided by, that 12 times 3, are those lines? 12 multiplied by 3, or line 12 times 3, that?
It's line 12 times 3.
Okay, but line 12 is. That's all right, it's nothing.
I think it's at 7716, I think it's actually line 9, the adjustment, because it's giving you an adjustment factor.
I'm sorry.
I don't know, I don't design the forms, so. But I bet it's supposed to be in line 11.
They didn't tell us, we didn't have CPA to do this.
Because I bet if you take.
Not worth the trouble. Because it tells you on the bottom line what you can do. Total adjustment, 75,000. That's a dollar figure though, because that 67 added to 79, so when they get to 87, or 85,700.
Just about 10 minutes, so I'll do that.
Well, it's not exactly the right amount, but it's line 3 times line 11.
Okay, 3 times.
Again, 6849.
Close enough. Good day. Welcome aboard.
I forgot what your question was. About the landfill. Oh, um, he didn't put in the expected income, and then I had a question about leaving that capital, the reserve, why there was 10,000 less than the reserve, 10,000. Did we use it for an expense?
Not that I know of, but I'm assuming that the cash carryover wasn't as much as they expected. But if you remember, they paid for all that crushed concrete, and then they're getting the money back, but they would have initially paid for it, so I wonder if that isn't some of it, because then it would have reduced his cash carryover more than what they had expected it to be.
Right, but the current year estimate's 42,000, and the proposed estimate for next year is 33,000.
Well, he's just zeroing that out, so.
Okay.
Um, so that it zeros you.
Okay. Okay.
But I'll look at it, but I saw. I'm just not quite sure why it wouldn't be the same dollar amount as he was gonna, unless it created a tax levy, so.
Okay, so I think what we need to, we are having the department heads next week, correct?
Yes.
So a few of the things that I would like to say is, number one, they need to fill out the evaluation form that's given. Not make up a new one, not do it, and we can talk about maybe what our expectations are for the evaluation form, or what they might want changed on it, but that's not been universal. The other thing is, the budget form, like a lot of these budgets, that she left lines for breakdowns so that we knew which things may be increasing, which things may be decreasing, but instead we're just getting totals. That doesn't really help us to configure the budget just by guessing from the total number from last year. So those are the two things I really wanna press upon, is please fill out all the same forms and do them completely, because the landfill doesn't have the revenue source in there, so we're supposed to be seeing what we think it's gonna generate versus what we're levying for. Because that controls how we make our decision as to where to cut. And then, so we do need to have a discussion about, what time is the second appointment today? Okay, so between these two, I think we need to talk about the merit raise issue. That way we have something to tell them next week, and we're gonna get their input and then make that decision next week. Is there anything else that we need to look at before we conduct the interview?
No, but before you end for the day, we have to say, is the board of commissioners.
Hey, to pay?
To pay that on.
Okay.
And I have it somewhere, so I will.
And do we, do we have the key to this cabinet, Dawn? Because I have some executive session material I do need to file. Oh, I'll be here afterward and do that. Okay, so. Probably, probably. I would entertain a motion to go into executive sessions, and what we will be doing is conducting our interview. Don't forget that as we go through these questions, we need to have a ranking system, so your thoughts on the response need to, probably need to jot down beside each question on here in the left-hand column, like a 1 through 5.
1 being, 5, 5, 5.
Right, and that way we have, and this is, yeah, sure.
I make a motion that we go into executive session here in the committee room to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 7543192B for one hour. Is that enough?
That should be plenty.
All right.
To conduct an interview?
My second.
So it's been moved and seconded for a one-hour executive session to conduct an interview under Personnel Matters, to reconvene here with the commission and Mr. Krueger. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Yes, thank you.
We'll see you, Gordon.
Yep, you bet, thank you.
See that bottle of water?
Yeah, what about it?
In the park?
It's emptied out right now.
Yeah, I know, I need to too.
You have an insurrection in place right now.
Well, you better go, we might be talking too much in the men's room, pal.
I'll ring it at you one time and you take it personally.
Future policy. Well, I'm gonna go there too. I gotta go, to hell with it. We won't decide how to spend the budget too much, you know?
I have some crackers, if you'd like some crackers.
Okay. They may be a little stale because they're considering they're open. Thank you.
And I hooked the button to get my quarter back, and got a gold dollar, so.
Whoa.
I'm gonna be a stone from the machine.
You made out on that deal.
Um, this machine is actually cheaper than the grocery store. A bag of M&amp;M's at the grocery store is a dollar nine plus tax, here it's a dollar. I thought those seemed like candy was a dollar. Oh, is it a dollar 25? Oh, never mind, I thought it was a dollar.
Isn't that water bottle, though? We put water in that, you know?
Oh, man.
Yeah, I never realized how many were in this floor.
What?
I never realized how many were in this floor. Until I started moving these tables through the dust room.
Ready for my nap?
Okay, so we have quite a bit of work to do on the budget. What do we have on next week's agenda thus far? The department head meeting?
We're not doing Thursday, right?
Well, I just, I said about canceling it because we were gonna do the interviews that day, so I figured, what's the point?
That's fine. Last week.
Of the agenda.
Last week.
I think next week afternoon we should dedicate to the budget.
Yeah, we gotta get that going.
On Monday?
Yeah, next Monday, maybe do whatever we have for appointments, and then maybe even take a lunch break so we can come back and do.
Fine, maybe.
The budget, because.
Or even, it'd be okay if I did it this Thursday too, but, I mean, whatever you want to do. It's not that pressing.
If you didn't want to take a break for lunch, the grocery store, we're bringing three of those sandwiches.
We can do that, that would work.
If I call, give you a break, you just need to know what you want. So I'll call them at 10 o'clock, whenever we convene, and say.
Yeah.
That's lunchtime, let's hit the table.
That'll work, yeah, then.
Well, I think, I think some people wanna take a break, like Dawn, who did a lot of work there. Like, do you want no lunch, don't you, take an hour off to relax a little?
It does not matter.
What?
It does not matter, I don't get to lunch anymore, so.
Yeah, but if we go right through always, and it's a long day, if you start and then go through to 3 o'clock, no stop. So next Monday, no Thursday, this Thursday, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm gonna see if Jeff can come, too.
What?
I'm gonna see if Jeff can come.
On Monday?
Yeah.
That'd be good, if he can come for the afternoon, even two hours, like, just to go through.
Oh, that's the auditor? Okay, yeah. Yeah, we gotta get, deal with that.
So Dawn, the, that amount, the reduction amount that has to happen, that was using all the numbers that we told them, correct, just to plug in straight across? So that doesn't increase, that's not counting the increase in dollar value for the certain mills, like, I'll use the hospitals as an example, we didn't put in 10 mills, we just put in the dollar amount, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought.
We've got new salaries that we're gonna have to put in, our highway department, I mean. It's a significant jump, we had planned on, probably a couple more. But we ought to be able to get some reductions because of the people that have terminated, and even though we're gonna rehire, we don't have two or three months of available time, and that'll help. This might be an opportunity to look for our emergency manager and decide whether or not that really is a part-time job.
I think what we ought to do is do a proposal for someone who contracted to us. Celine County has multiple people in that department.
No reason they couldn't, with Ellisburg or Mitchell County, or even.
Thank you. Those are in Russell County, have one, share one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they might wanna do.
Well, and the way I understand it is, we have to provide for the budget.
Yes.
But that doesn't mean we have to fully staff it or anything like that, it's kind of up to us as to how we, we just have to make sure that someone's assigned to it, so.
We got to do the job.
Right.
How we do the job is our business.
Right, right, so for, with Celine County, that line item for LEP, that's Sean Estrul, and he just comes in to make sure that we're up to snuff on all that we do, but he actually isn't our employee.
Yep. There's no reason that, and like Steve said, he does a lot of other stuff too. A lot of other stuff does because he's having fun doing it, it's not part of the job. He's here, he can go early, huh?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a reason not to. Because if we're gonna work on the budget with the auditor, I think that'll, that'll make it, it'll expedite the process a little faster, but our biggest issue is gonna be if we're increasing line items on salaries, unless trying to decrease, we have to figure that out.
Yep.
So, that being said, we will postpone the rest of the budget discussion until next Monday, and I would like us to stay for a five-minute executive session after this interview. I just wanted to update you on my talks with the nursing home situation.
We've got that thing that Dawn has too, we've got it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you, okay. So I will let him know, maybe we can start in.
I'll turn this off.
I can't hear.
Yeah, it's, yeah, right, I'm gonna be here. Yeah, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your turn.
All right, I, I move to go into executive session, uh, I need my cheat sheet here.
Do you have the vote to interview?
Yes, I gotta move it, move to recess and exec confession for one hour for the purpose of discussing an interview. Justification pursuant to KSA 7543192B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
I second the motion.
And to reconvene in the courthouse, commissioner's room, when finished.
Okay, Mr. McKay.
Should I say that? With Mr.?
Brendan McKay.
With Brendan McKay.
And did you second?
I did.
It's been moved and seconded for an executive session for one hour for the interview, is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
We'll put a little pre-see together for our meeting on Monday of evaluation comparison votes, spreadsheet.
I think we may just do it a five-minute executive session right now.
That works for me.
Okay, so I move to enter into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing interview comparisons for the highway director of Highway Department pursuant to KSA 7543192B. Personnel matters of non-elected personnel to reconvene in the commission room with, just the commission.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded for five-minute executive session, is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor. If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
For an hour?
Yes.
Because that should be enough.
Dawn, we decided that we would like to come on Wednesday at 9:00, will that work for you? We will hopefully keep it to an hour.
Just a one-hour session?
That way we can rediscuss the interviews and try to come up with a proposal for a job offer. If you don't have any objections, I'm going to assign these bills, one from Hayworth.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
One from...
Yeah, me too, sign them.
Okay.
And then we gotta go...
And then we need...
And then we gotta sign the check for the bill.
Yeah, the public voting commission. There was one thing I wanted to discuss with you though about the nursing home, so I'm going to make the motion. I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing licensing for the nursing home pursuant to KSA 7543192B.
No, shoot.
I do somewhere, where did I put it?
I gave one.
Number four, to discuss a data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, to reconvene in the commission room with the commission and the clerk.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for a five-minute executive session on the nursing home. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries.
Make sure we have our deck slide in the middle, Alexis, I saw nothing fall through the cracks that we missed, forgot about.
Okay, so I'm going to adjourn us as the commission, and I will reconvene our same board as the public building commission at three minutes to five.
I have a little bit different time. Okay, I'm sorry. First off, I didn't think about this until you convened them. I think you guys have to reorganize now that all the board members are different for the public building commission.
I thought we did. I think we did once Randy got on.
So, Al Joe was the secretary, so I need somebody to get him to sign off.
Okay.
We'll have to go do all the paperwork. I don't know, it's a possibility that Leanne is also on the signature card, I don't remember, but I could call and find out.
Who can I sign off as the chair? I think I'm still the chair of both, right?
The problem is, you're not on the bank account, so the counter signature.
Oh, oh, Al Joe was on the bank account.
I didn't even think about that.
Does it need to be done today?
I, how about this, you guys will approve?
To approve?
Yes, and then I will call the bank.
Change it?
Yes, and if Leanne can possibly countersign off.
Well, he's in town, can we assign him and Leanne? If not, you would maybe run down here for a signature?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to appoint Mr. Gableman. And what is the position called?
Treasurer.
As treasurer of the public building commission.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, the appointment of the new treasurer, is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do we need a banking resolution or anything like that to get me on the signature card?
No, the minutes will do, I'll just have to do the minutes really quickly. But here is the, I didn't make copies, but the interest payment as due is $72,000. And we pay interest in August, and then interest and principal in February. So that is what I need you guys to approve.
I move to approve Lake County Public Building Commission payment in the amount of $72,000 for the remittance of bonds due.
Nursing home bond, I mean, hospital bond.
Hospital, for the hospital.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded for the payment, $72,000, the hospital bond, is there any further discussion? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So if Leanne can sign it, you will have her sign it, if not, you're now the appointed signee.
Give me a call to put it signed on the round.
Awesome. Okay, I...
There's only one Monday of the year that I am required to be prescribed. And that's the Monday that contains, that is contained within the week of 11 October.
Okay.
We have for the last 20 years gone to the Cayman Islands to launder all money that week.
Okay, bring me back.
You need to quit admitting all your dirty deeds on camera.
Oh, we put some quarters, my baby.
So they'll have to talk, tell her you're not going to be here.
So that's the only Monday of the year that I am required to be gone.
We'll probably, we'll probably, well, you'll survive.
I will adjourn public building commission, and the Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners will meet on Wednesday in two days at 9:00 a.m.
All right. Good to meet.